One nation to the flag of the highest states of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do a roll call again, Ben Hutt.
Yeah.
Jeff, four penny.
Here.
I received an email from Patty Dolan saying that the Friends of Bowling Green Township have now been registered as a 501(c) group. An unincorporated nonprofit association agent appointment. So she wanted the board to know that. I do have a resolution for accepting amounts and rates, but I put that under new business, I think, for the county. Received a notice about public hearing. You guys get these?
What was that one?
Tax amendment to section 4.42 sidewalks. And then flood plain and water courses and open spaces. The meeting is October 27. Received the annual report from Ohio Plan. I'll leave that here in case anyone wants to look at it. And that was all I had.
You have things in or?
I do.
You got any to do?
I noticed that on the report period, there's nothing for park anymore. We not going to have any updates each month on rentals and things?
I can put it back on there if the board wants it back on there.
The reason I mentioned it now is because I guess it could under correspondence. You got a couple copies of that in here, which you didn't want me to take. There was more than one of these. This is a letter that went out on behalf of the board, and I'm concerned about it because I don't think letters should be going out on behalf of the board without board approval. And this letter, I don't know who composed it, but it is a volunteer form with all our names on it, and it says, Dear Bowling Green Township resident, and it says that we are doing a project, which we have not determined we're doing this project or not. So that's always a concern when somebody has taken it on themselves to individually, as an elected official or perhaps volunteer did this. But it shouldn't be done that way.
What does that say? It just says doing a project? Or is there more to it?
This was in this packet of this, this I assume is our copy, Jenny?
Yes.
And you didn't want me to take it, so I can look at it. This letter, it says, Dear Bowling Green Township resident, we will be putting in new fence, park benches, painting, installing drinking fountains, solar sun shades, replacing the marquee to upgrade the township public park during 2014 through 15. We will need help from residents to complete this project. If you would be able to donate time or money, it would be greatly appreciated. Several years ago, volunteers helped install new playground equipment, mulch, and fixed up the community building after receiving a Nature Works grant. Now the park needs to complete phase two of our upgrade, as township residents, we can make this happen. We will need some monetary assistance, any dollar now would be appreciated. In addition, we will need some volunteers to help paint, install fence, and install the water fountain, sun shades, and marquee. Please indicate below which areas we can count and help. And then inside here, there's quite a few pages of a form that was with this. It's just right here. It's the right one or did this one?
That's the one that we were, that we actually received. That's the notice.
This letter is part of this, along with quite a few pages, I don't know how many there are, of people that received the letter and signed up for certain amounts of time. I didn't see any here where people were donating financial money, just.
Oh, I just stepped on my grain.
But this was the letter that was sent on behalf of the board, which was never discussed here. And we've never, it's just not accurate either. This says that we are doing this in 2014-15. And my thoughts on it is that we would only be doing it if we were successful with getting a grant. And so I got it, of course, and I also did receive the public hearing notice that you referenced.
Safety, I think everything's still all right on safety. I think Jack. Safety's everything's okay and.
Yeah, we got it all fixed.
Yep, fire. Zoning.
We had two permits. Jonathan Van Guren for Newfield of Cherry Hill. John Campbell, he's adding a pool horn. It is a non-farm related. That's off Cooperada Road. Also sent one application in for the appeal slash variance board. That was for Thomas Sorg at Cherry Hill Road. And I mailed out the three junk car violation letters.
Jenny, on number two, the application for appeal. I know there's a timeframe we're supposed to adhere to. Has that been, to set the hearings and things, has that been done?
No.
It's still in the working phase.
So the paperwork's not filled out yet?
Paperwork's filled out. Paperwork's turning in.
Okay.
We're all working together to get the dates set. Reasonable time.
There is a guideline on that of how much time you have to do that.
We haven't even hit 30 days.
Any idea when the date will be set?
Not the appeals board, not the zoning board.
Jenny, do you want to advertise? Have you said anything?
I have no idea. You would have to call the chair of the appeals board, which is Patty Dolan, or email her.
Won't she also be having to contact you, or is she going to advertise it herself?
She will contact me, but she has not contacted me. I have no idea when they plan to have it.
Patty Dolan.
I just left trash on there. I didn't know if there was anything about it that we need to know or not.
There's a, the court date was set October. October 9th, 2:30 is what I have. Judge Rainstool, in the East Court Room. That I got from lcounty.com.
Okay, is that all we got?
I am unfinished.
Yep.
For new business, I have a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies of and certifying them to the county auditor. This is basically just accepting what the county has, the county budget commission has given, or will be giving to us next year. And it it's roughly about the same amount that we received this year, so I just need a motion to accept the resolution.
I'd like a motion to accept the resolution.
Let's take a quick look at it. This is annually, right?
Yes, and it's for next year's budget.
One second.
Do a roll call to Dan.
Yeah.
Ben.
Yep.
Jeff.
Yeah, can you read the copy of that now here, the last page?
Sure.
Oh, for new business, we just got that.
Yeah.
We were doing some work up on between Beet Street and First Street in the right way through there, and we snagged a business fence for underground fence for a bill. I would have looked at Dan when I noticed it. Work was cut out, so that's a really big problem. The guy had it fixed by business fence. They asked us to reimburse him the cost or pay for the bill, which comes to $107.14. Good question. Do we have to pay tax on that?
We'll see if he paid. I mean, if we're reimbursing, yeah.
It was our fault, so I'll make a motion that we reimbursed Jeff Igers $107.14 to have the underground business fence repaired.
Was this located in our right of way, or was it on private property?
Right on the edge.
Right on the edge.
I'd like an opportunity to talk to the person before we proceed on, because I'd like to get his perspective on it.
We're just going to motion in a second to pay the bill. Do a roll call, Dan.
Yeah.
Ben.
Yeah.
Jeff.
I can sustain since I don't have information I'd like to have.
Okay, is that all we got?
That's my copy.
When you were up there, did you also take care of that ditch by Bowling Green? Did it clean out? That's what Mrs. Harvey and her husband were, that area was straight up there, and that First Street and Beach.
You'll see what got done. We're going to go check the fence out.
You can't, you can't correspond with me?
We did some ditching between Beet and First.
Did you do anything on Bowling Green Street?
We did some ditching between Beet and First.
That's all we've done so far. Okay. That's all under new business. Okay, other comment?
Carrie, did you have something?
A question was arose during this meeting on putting the park committee back on, reports back on. If we don't have a park committee, let me rephrase that. Did you at the last township meeting vote in the Friends of Bowling Green as a park group? So if you did not do that, why would we have a park committee report when there is no park committee?
That's right.
Shouldn't be.
Thank you.
What I'm wanting is a report either from Don or from the person handling all the money, which should be Jenny. How many times it's been ran into, the basic information. I don't care, you know, I guess it should really be Jenny, because I, Don's supposed to be giving it to you how often now? Once every two weeks or something?
Once a month.
That, yeah, it's the information that I think we should be privy to.
I understand that that would be a park committee report.
No, it's not.
That's community building. That's it.
I don't care what you call it. It's income that we have and its usage or the building, and that's what I'd like to see as a report.
And you should ask Jenny for that, instead of putting a park committee report back on again when we don't have a park committee.
Park report, whatever you want to call it, I'd like to get.
It's not a park. It's community building.
I don't care what it's called. I'd like to have that information so we can review it each month.
I was just curious, because you know, you stated park committee, and if you're going to name it something, you should name it correctly. I have one more question, please. Do you acknowledge me? This is just a question I think all of us noticed. On the back on the checks, National Trail Party Department, understand that insurance. Licking Township Trustees, $12,979.82. Hopewell Township Trustees, $12,979.82. Curious on what those are.
Those are both fire departments. Fire departments, okay. That's all we wanted to know. All three of those are the fire departments.
Fire, okay.
Hopewell Township, Licking Township, or Township own fire departments.
Okay. No, the reason it said trustees, that's where we were.
That says our township own, you know, trustees.
Trustees, and we may pay now. Okay, that was it. But to confirm, Bowling Green, Friends of Bowling Green was not voted, okay?
Well, it was, it was voted on, and this grant, it's referred, been referenced in this grant paperwork as I read to you last meeting.
Correct.
And it was voted on that way.
But it was voted on the grant, not the park committee, not them being a park committee. They voted on applying for the grant.
The application for the grant. They're the states that they are that entity.
But they, they never voted on them as that entity. They only voted on the grant, not that pre-paperwork prior to their little.
I think it's in here. I think what was submitted officially calls them an official committee of the township.
Is that true then? Are they the park committee? Because I don't recall that ever coming across.
That's what the paperwork says it was submitted.
Because what I saw on that was was an introduction of who they are and what they're trying to do, but you, the trustees, did the grant. Am I correct?
We voted for the grant.
I tried to get the inaccuracies, the falsehoods corrected prior to sending that by, by moving to amend the motion, which did not get a second. It was submitted unless it was changed again for the time we approved, that it's, it's in paperwork that they are the park committee.
The motion was made to apply for the grant. We did not do anything about making anybody an official group.
Okay, so it didn't indicate Friends of Bowling Green. It indicated the grant.
It indicated them as a group. I clearly spelled that out, pointed it out to everybody prior to then sending it. Do you have meeting minutes, draft or anything for?
I do not have them with me.
Just, I just asked that you get that accurate, because I didn't move a motion, even though I didn't give a second. Needs to be in the meeting minutes as such.
Okay, any more?
Yeah. That's old house up there on 40. It's burnt. It's changed hands now. What are we going to do about that? How long are you going to leave it? Do you have one to clean it up? Has anybody anything done about that yet? Or do you still have a subject?
Yeah, it's changed hands from the person who voted it to, that were caught on fire, to somebody else, you know that. I don't, there's no timeframe stipulation.
We have nothing in our zoning. The only thing you can do is contact the health department, because it will become a hazard, health hazard with rats and debris falling down around it.
Winners of that, they're doing else.
Sorry?
The winners of that, they're turning apart and moving to the city. They haven't done anything for a month.
I believe the board passed a motion of adding Jenny in a year, which I don't know that that year's happened yet.
For that house?
He doesn't have it.
It's sold.
Yeah, it's sold.
Well, I don't know how your motion was, if it was for that person or if it was for the address.
The year itself must allow him to live in a camper for a year.
Yeah.
For a year.
Yeah.
Right, not in that house.
That's all the motion was.
I don't, I don't know that he ever did that, do you?
No, he didn't. He went up to the other house.
Month or two or so.
Two months, six.
Okay, so the motion had nothing to do with the structure that's there?
Nope.
We had nothing in there about the lockades, I think.
Yeah, we have to contact the health department. They come in and they take over on that.
I think some of them have been doing it too.
You can call them. You are allowed to call them. The more residents are called, the more action they will take.
Has anyone taken the time to meet the new owner or what their intentions might be?
The new owner is the lady that put that trailer up on.
Oh, wow. I had to buy it immediately.
Oh, they got it right up on the ground?
Oh, Lord.
You want to do your street job.
Yeah, one of those street jobs.
But just to let you guys know, she cannot rebuild or do anything to that until she contacts us, because that is a non-conforming law. It is not grandfathered because she is now altering it. She has to bring it up to conforming. It has to have a subject, and it has to have water put in it.
You're talking about in the north side now.
We're talking about the house that burnt down right over here.
No, you're talking about non-conforming. You're talking about the house?
The land is not conforming, because it has no subject or water in it. And it has to be brought up to standards before they can do anything. The health department's going to slam them on that.
We got a water dig up, probably haul water in when it needed. There's only a half a lot, and the street takes up half of that.
Right.
They got enough room.
The health department has been involved with that already, from the previous owner.
Okay.
We talked about trick or treat here in village. Halloween falls on Friday, the 31st. I'd like to make a motion that we set a trick or treat for, for the village here on Thursday, the 30th, October 30th, from 5 to 7. There's also been some interest brought up to where if you were not living in the village, you could bring your vehicle in and do a village trunk or treat, or you could do it out back to your car, if people wanted to take part in passing up candy and stuff. I think that's a good idea to get some of the people that don't live directly in village involved.
Set the flyers, someone's made.
Ben made a motion to have trick or treat on Thursday, the 30th. Is there a second?
No, second.
Roll call, Dan.
Yeah.
Ben.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Can you pick one of the ones there? Is that hard? Do you just can't do that?
I'll try. I'm having issues with getting stuff.
Stop up there.
Can I make another comment? One of these lots, like that one burnt down over there, but it managed a lot more than. As, as people come down there, they can't see. Police move that twice a year.
All right.
Yeah.
I don't think everything in our city, how we turn.
How can we get that into zoning?
You have to request through the zoning board, so you need to ask the township if they can bring the word up and give them what you're allowed to see altered.
I'd like to see it moved twice a year.
I'd like to see it held in there. I can buy it in the market. That sucker, this market, all the time. On Bowling Green.
Is that S1 also?
Right there, right up, right next to it, right there. It is, the sucker's growing down over there.
Here, one of the garbage bins.
Yeah, that's S1. You can request in the S1 district to have yard maintenance, at least, you know, so many per, and ask if they can go in front of the board to change the zoning. If that's needed. I'm happy to give it. You're a good boy.
Do you have anything further? You good with that?
What'd you say?
Are you done?
Yeah.
Do you want to discuss that anymore? No?
I'd just like to see you do something about it. Bring it up, try to get it straightened up, because it's a hazard. You don't, I don't think, Ben, everything laying there way over.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. So that would have to go to the zoning.
That's right.
Board, and they would make a ruling?
They would change the zoning. They need to change the zoning. It would be the S1 district. Both lots are in the S1 that we're talking about. Not all of Bowling Green.
Well, Jack, Jack asked to do that, so we just pass that information along, correct?
Correct.
Do we have to, do we have to vote on that here?
You have to bring it to the zoning board. You have to vote on the break to the zoning board.
I don't think that's, I don't think you actually have to do that.
Can we do something about her own lots, one nobody lives in now?
Well, what does that mean more? They can review it and see what they think. What's wrong with that? Do we have to make a maximum here to pass it along now?
Whatever happened with that, early in the year, they had reported that they hadn't had meetings, and, or was that the appeals board that felt that that was Patty's board?
That's S1.
But either one of them met in one, I think.
They don't have to meet once a year.
Yeah.
It's a rule. We'll be meeting.
I don't think I've, I haven't seen any of them have any meetings this year.
They're going to be meeting. There's an appeal, so they have to meet. The board of zoning, I have no idea. I haven't gotten any notice or anything. But I know I have an appeal, so they have to have a meeting before the end of the year.
We also request ma- maintain empty lots and.
Ask them to have a search, see what the hell is there.
You can bring your mower down here.
I know, we should have phoned them back.
Just in a second.
Sixteen.
Damn, second to that.
That's Bowling Green. It's on now. Well, sixteen and a half foot. That's the problem. I mean, I agree with it.
But, but.
Yeah, we're still inside, man.
I'm trying to find that maldirection process, but you, the trustees, have to bring it to the board to check.
All right.
Which I can find it and give you.
There'd be one mower. Just throw on that, just throw on that little hill and. That's why you need to get over a boat and throw it down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, but he wants to go. We're talking about all the time.
I think we got to set the size while you're calling.
I ain't going to suck it, sucker. I suppose I don't know how to get my weed here out of the weed, I guess, I'm down here.
Be a good neighbor to the tree.
I get a certificate here for fire contract payment, $12,979.82. Three of those. That was $38,939.46. Next one is a purchase order for tire repair. Repairs and maintenance. $1,006.4418. Is this what it, is this just due to us this year or what?
I don't know. Yeah, I might, I heard that. No, that was for entire repair.
This is one that just happened? We had a $1,600 fire repair.
The factor, I think, is too terrible about it.
Okay, this next one here is operating supplies, $2,000. This one's a blanket one, right?
Right, that's for most of them.
Can I read you something? Section 6.1, general amendments. Whenever the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, or good zoning practice required, the board of trustees may by resolution, after receipt of recommendation, therefore from the zoning commission, the subject to the proceeds provided by law, immense supplement change or repeal. Well, that is when they give it to you. In Article 6 in the amendments is where it's at. That one's kind of confusing, because it says that you guys have to do it by. That one's kind of confusing because it says that you guys have to do it by a resolution, but they're giving it to you before the appeals, the changes have been brought to you. The next one, six point two discusses the process for the zoning commission to do the change. And part two, by adopting a resolution by the board of trustees again. So somebody has to bring it to them, which would be the board.
Jenny, can you do that?
Yeah, and you can actually get the prosecuting attorney on that.
Check four five two, that was the first check, two hundred and three dollars, seventy-eight cents for power parts engineering. Service call, check the backup. Pressure on transmission and change sending unit. Names already got these ones.
Yeah, the six eleven may approve it. So six point one is the root.
There, they already have all the six. Half auto parts, one fifty-four seventy. Check four five one six. More filters.
Six point one is you going to them via resolution. Six point eleven is you approving via resolution. So there's your steps. If you want me to get copies, I think they gave them to you guys before, but if you want, we give you two.
Sign a second line down.
Somebody like that.
To bring it to the zoning commission.
W M W Motors Incorporated, one hundred and eighty-four dollars, eighty-seven cents for repairs.
Patty Golden was also supposed to come here because she talked to the prosecuting attorney and there's something else that needs to go in front of the zoning commission and that's a change to parts of the appeals and the variance. Okay, and if you want to get copies of that, we give it to you from Brad Mercer. Our zoning is extremely updated on convenience, profit, you know, on the reasons you would approve an appeal.
Check four five one seven, seven dollars, eighty-two cents, Jenny Ball, postage reimbursement. Check four five one eight, two thousand dollars, limestone, sixty-five dollars, twenty-six cents. Four five one nine, Public Equity Consortium, two hundred and sixty dollars, forty cents, OPEC, life. Four four nine six, Lowe's Companies Incorporated, one forty-seven eighty-two. Doesn't say what the stuff's for. What we get from those.
Ben? Hold on, I'm saying I would get the exact writing and handle it.
That's, that's invoice number.
So you might want to put that on your-
Buildings, maybe building supply. Four four nine six, minus one forty-seven eighty-two. Do you have any more detailed information in this? Did you get that all worked out? The signs that were, the missing signs were found? Did we pay for them twice? Did they send or pick up to get those back or what?
We only got them.
We got twice. I don't know where they installed them.
No, the children. As far as I know, we only received them once. That's why I reordered them. Did you find them?
I found them back in the center bank. And then another quarter.
This is the first I'm hearing about it.
Uh, four four, but we didn't pay for them twice.
No.
Four four ninety-seven, five hundred and ninety-four dollars, seventy cents, number recycling for the frontings. Four four nine eight, Rider Estate, two hundred and four dollars. Four five oh one, Parks and League, fifty-four twenty-nine, cell phone and mileage. Four five oh two, Steel Oil Company, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, seven cents for bulk fuel. I guess these ones are going the other direction. This is their purchase order for repairs and maintenance.
You're going to have a cold without all the hot.
That's Southeast Tire, number four five oh three, one thousand six forty-four eighteen. Four five oh five, are you on? They signed this this month? He's signing this this month. Mr. Hub, are you signing this this month?
He said they authorized the shorts for the rest of the year.
This is check four, uh, four five oh five, Jeffrey Corpini, six twenty-three twenty-one. Ben Hub refuses to comment on the way, won't sign it again.
None of us really want to sign.
You got the floor, Dan, why don't you tell me why?
That's what I always do.
Pardon?
No, go ahead. Mix your wine, go like this. It works. Go ahead.
That's her professional answer.
Someone's going to make you out, buddy.
Well, they should. We should, I was just talking about that.
That's no explanation at all, Dan. Four five oh four, new service concepts. Who's this?
Those sweatshirts for the employees.
One fourteen ninety-five, where'd you find that? You just picked out a company and asked them? Do you have receipts?
I don't. They were supposed to leave the receipt here, I didn't know.
Four five one four, Hope Well Township trustees, twelve thousand nine seventy-nine eighty-two. We've got all three of those here. They're all exactly the same. Four five one three, this one's Licking Township trustee, same amount, twelve thousand nine seventy-nine eighty-two. Four five one two, National Trail Fire Department, twelve thousand nine seventy-nine eighty-two, fire contract.
I didn't look that close.
Don W. Watkins, four five one one, eight seventy-two eighty-seven. We're missing some checks here. Where's your check, Dan? Where? Can I see it? Where's your check, Dan, uh, Ben? Where's your check, Ben? I'd like to see your check, Ben. Where's that, Dan? I'd like to see it. Please pass it.
Are bills paid?
No, they're not. There's a few left. I'd like to see those. The bills aren't paid. There's two more plus these two. I don't know.
You did, Jeff, you made such a big deal of signing checks, but you know what? None of the employees that you never signed has never made an issue of it. You're the only one that makes an issue of anything.
It is an issue, Dan. You're not signing these checks. Are you going to show me these checks so I can-
I did show them to you.
Read them into the record and sign them or not?
I want to back the thing. That's removed.
Let me see it.
I made a motion to adjourn it.
There's two checks that- You're not going to give me an opportunity to sign those two checks.
I'll second it.
There's four checks that did not get read into the record.
Did you ever make an issue when he didn't sign your check?
One more time before you leave?
Did you?
Yes, I did. I did an issue. I made a severe issue because I couldn't cash them.
Oh, that's right. That's right. I know it.
But if it was, everybody else was here.
Yeah.
You could sign it, you're fine. I don't really care.
You got Don was going that way.